Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Study Session Meeting of Tuesday, July 8, 2025. And I'll call the meeting to order. Would everybody please stand and let's say the Pledge of Allegiance together? Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two study session items tonight. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of our first item?
First, I'll do roll call.
Oh, yeah, roll call, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The record will reflect that all council is present.
Got it. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could report out that no action was taken in closed session.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number one is review of city commissions and committees, and I will present that item. The City Council requested a review of commissions and committees, their scope of work, and how they provide recommendations to the council. In 2023, the council conducted a thorough review of the scope, committee membership, and ad-hocs, and updates were included in the revised handbook. And we currently have three commissions and eight committees. This slide is just an overview of the commissions and committees. Clarification is being requested on how the Parks and Community Services Commission and the Arts Commission provide recommendations to the City Council. Staff suggests as an example, language similar to the FIPAC Committee, such as a memorandum from the chair will be provided to the City Council as to their recommendations. Majority of the commission must agree on the recommendation. Also, committees have several options as they can provide updates via memo, annual reports, or report out to the liaison. Staff recommends the City Council discuss the city's commissions and committees along with the commission and committee member handbook, provide specific feedback on changes, and direction on how council prefers to receive updates or direction from their committees and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. City Council, do you have any questions of staff at this time? No questions? All right. Councilmember Pettis.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. If I could get a second, that'd be great because I have a PowerPoint that...
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. We should take public comment before we consider any action?
No, no, no. He's doing... He's on point.
Okay, thank you.
Continue, continue, councilmember.
Yes, I have a PowerPoint that I created with much consultation with Commissioner Fisher Dardarian on arts, and I would like to request that he be able to go a couple of minutes over his allotted three minutes to present the PowerPoint on my behalf.
Second. All right. Anybody opposed? Okay, that passes, so he can do that. Welcome, Commissioner. Thanks for doing this. Oh, hold on one second. I don't think so. There you go.
Great. All right, well, thank you so much, City Council. As Councilmember Pettis mentioned, my name is Fisher Dardarian. I am the Vice Chair of the Arts Commission, though I don't come formally perhaps on behalf of the Arts Commission, as I haven't put this before them and gotten a vote, but it has been taken into consideration and in consultation with various members, two members, I should say, keeping within the Brown Act, of course, speaking with the Chair and with another Commissioner. And so Councilmember Pettis had approached me and just asked, given some of these structural questions that have been happening, to put together my thoughts and offer some possible proposals from the Arts Commission perspective at least of what we're hoping to see open up for us and kind of possibilities going forward to strengthen the commission. So I just have a couple items here. Can I hit that? It's not letting me go forward. Can we do the next slide? Oh, it doesn't want to go forward. Sorry about this. All right, I'll try and keep it as... As brief as possible, as technology will allow. Well, and perhaps just to give some background of myself as we're trying to get technology to cooperate. My background during my... For my day job, I should say, I run an organization called the Roger Scruton Legacy Foundation, which is an international foundation advancing the legacy of an English philosopher named Sir Roger Scruton, who I think was, and many would argue, was one of the top leading philosophers of aesthetics, which is the philosophy of beauty and art in the last hundred years. And I also work part-time for another institution called the National Civic Art Society, which is currently advising various efforts in Washington, DC on federal and civic architecture and public monuments and various things. So this is my world. I love this kind of stuff, and I'm in it every day, talking about art and philosophy and how we make this real for communities and make this important. So I'll just kind of go into it as we're trying to get it figured out. I think there's a printout at the very least that you can kind of see what was going on. The first slide... Oh, there we go. There was the problem slide, but that just laid out, I think, four major or three major issues that I tried to address in four ways, that there is an issue with reporting mechanisms was just brought up by staff, which I was very pleased to see.
Give me a second, Commissioner. So you're going to be working off the Elmo on this with the... This is what we've got?
Yes.
Okay. The PowerPoint's not functioning, but we've got this thing. Can we... Because it's not... The first one where it says "solution," it's not legible. Can we make it... Can we make it bigger?
Is that working?
Or can we... Well, it's good for the public to see it.
Mr. Mayor, can we go to other public comment while we're reading to figure this out?
I got a full-size version of the PowerPoint right here if I don't know.
No, it's okay. I understand.
Hold on one second, Commissioner. Do you... Is this technical problem something that would be resolved if we had more time? Or are we just dead in the water with this thing?
We're trying to pull it up. I had... Pull it up again. We're going to load it back on again.
You're going to load it on? Well, why don't we do that? Councilmember Mart has a good suggestion. Why don't we go to the other public comment? You still get your time. That'll give us an opportunity to work on the technology, and then other people can speak in the meantime. So come on up. Anybody else wants to speak on this item? We'll see if that kills any time. Doesn't look like it. People aren't coming up. How about on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? We're vamping here a little bit to help us get this technology fixed.
Nobody on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Nobody on Zoom? Nobody's helping us at all? Come on. Nobody, nobody, nobody? All right.
Okay, we'll go back to this slide.
How are... Do you think we'll be able to... Are we... Have we fixed the technical problem?
No, we did not.
Yeah, if not, if we do a page of the time on the Elmo, we can read it. I can read that fine.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to the Elmo approach? All right, Commissioner, we're off to the races with the Elmo. We can read it. We can read it. So go ahead, write ahead.
Beautiful. Well, so there's a former slide that said "problem" and a commission without a voice. I'll admit, it was a little hyperbole. We do have a voice, but the issue is that we've just faced some structural problems in trying to get our message to council, and of course, there's been no built-in ways, I think, for us to communicate as bodies with one another. And so what I have here on this slide is solutions. And so I put together four solutions, as it were, for you all. One that addresses the structure, as I just mentioned, so that there'd be a formal reporting process, though it seems like staff has already gotten to that. The second being about the voice and the question of subcommittees or ad hoc committees or investigatory bodies, whatever we might want to call those. Then the next one being funding, and specifically funding for public arts, and the last one, identity. So here we are. We're going to it. Let's start with formal reporting pathway, if we can get to that one.
Going too far ahead, so stick with...
No, I'm sorry. There we are.
You were just throwing pages up there without regard to the... What was being said. So we're at formal reporting pathway. Okay? And then when he wants you to put another one up, then we'll put another one up. Okay. Go ahead. Continue, Commissioner.
Great. So just to briefly go over this one, I mean, it sounds like staff has already made their recommendations, which are exactly in line with what I was hoping. There's just the issue of the feedback loop and all advice that we as commissioners have been given up to this point, where that we ought to privately lobby or discuss these issues with our appointing council member. And of course, it would make sense, I think, for us to be able to communicate as bodies, for the commission to be able to make formal recommendations, and perhaps, as was suggested through a chair memo, be able to send ideas or proposals or recommendations to council. So we can move quickly on from that one. I think that's all good and fine. The next is the Subcommittee Authority, if you will. Thank you. So unleash the commission's capacity to do the work. We ran into some issues, and I mean this to no fault of any of the individuals involved, but there seemed to be some discrepancy, and I don't know if it was unfamiliarity or avoidance or whatever it might have been of the actual ordinance, but if I think it was attachment number four in today's packet has ordinance 1275, which is the ordinance for the Arts Commission in municipal code, excuse me, for the Arts Commission. And the issue that was raised was that we were discussing various ideas, and within that subsection B, it says, quote, "By its own motion, the Arts Commission may conduct studies and investigations," and so on and so forth. And that, at least to me, I'm not a lawyer, so forgive me, but perhaps to my layman's eyes, meant that we had the ability through our own motion to make such a body, as long as it was subquorum. And the handbook currently, or at least then, prohibited ad hoc committees or any sort of investigatory bodies without prior approval from both city manager and city attorney. Fine enough, but it just seemed to be some misalignment within the law and/or perhaps the ordinance, as I should say, and the handbook. And so if it would be possible for us to update that, so at least for the Arts Commission and any other body that this might be relevant to, we have the ability to do so, as we want to be able to actually consider the ideas, given that we've been appointed as public officials by all of you, to advise you best on cultural policy and ensure that we're able to actually look at, you know, what the city of the arts is doing for the arts and consider various things that are impractical, perhaps, for us to sit and discuss 10 different ideas and proposals within, you know, a regularly scheduled commission meeting. So that's one. We can go to the next slide, the civic... Oh, no, sorry, excuse me. Public... Dedicated Public Art Fund. So this one, I think, is a little bit of a larger ask, and this is going from kind of the structural and procedural issues that we've faced thus far to maybe more of a visionary kind of looking ahead as to what the Arts Commission can do. And I think Mayor Protim Chavez rightly raised this question a couple meetings back, maybe it was early June or late May, whatever it might have been, where he said, "What does the Arts Commission do?" And I think that's a very good question. You know, if you look at us right now, technically, I think we were approved within the budget discussions for about $457,000. What we see on the art side of things is a good portion of that is really towards salary staff, and then there's educational programming. And so when we look at the actual programs that technically fall under the jurisdiction of the Arts Commission, it's closer to about $240,000, $250,000, which roughly equals 0.11% of the entire general fund budget. Fine enough. That's okay. You know, I'm not up here to gripe about that. But what I think, you know, this raises is we are, in fact, the city of the arts, and we should be asking questions as to how we get public art available to the city that expresses who we are, that speaks to the civic identity, and kind of holds up what that brand or that logo or that idea actually means for Costa Mesa. And so one of the perhaps maybe more clever or creative ways I suggest us going about this, but there are a couple that I can just briefly touch upon, and again, once we get subcommittee situations figured out, the Arts Commission would be happy to look at and propose to council for further exploration, is to use the cannabis tax revenue, the money that comes in, the half percent for the cultural and arts master plan. I believe it is, quote, "something like the implementation of the cultural and arts master plan." What's happening now is that's just going, I guess, into general fund, but then comes back to the arts, which is just this general arts budget, as I discussed, is about $457,000. What would be wonderful to see, I think, is if we actually take that money, because this is the language that was used at the time in which I think the measure came before the city, as well as the ordinance that council then passed, to make it visible tangible expressions of the city of the arts and allow the public to be able to experience art in that way. And this would, of course, answer that very good question from Mayor Protim Chavez of what is the art commission for? Well, it's for creating public art and commissioning it and doing so with the budget and the funds provided by the city, you know, by the taxpayer dollars and appropriated to us or through us through... From the council. And of course, that doesn't mean you just give us the money and we decide. We can figure that out and look at what an actual process would look like to be able to commission art, but that certainly seems to me something that would allow the public to say, "That's where that cannabis tax revenue is going," as we've received many questions. I'm sure you all have received many questions as well, both in chambers and out. But that's one of the big things that I think we could do, you know, pretty quickly, just given it... And someone else can speak into this, but it seems to me simply to be an interpretation of the existing ordinance being a half percent for the implementation of the master plan. And the master plan, as number two says, is to expand public art throughout the city of Costa Mesa. Another idea is that we'd like to explore in the future is this question of allocating 1% of development budgets to public art, and there are ways to do that within CIPs. There are ways to do it for private development. Of course, that's not every single development, but perhaps if there's a certain threshold or eligibility standards and requirements, that's something we could explore. There's been discussion of the transient occupancy tax. I know at this level, we've also just briefly touched upon it in the commission. But again, these are ideas in which the commission would love to explore and say, "How does it work in other cities? What are other examples?" And be able to create a memo and a report and send this on to you all to consider. So those are just, I think, very visible, grounded ways for us to actually provide the Arts Commission a direction and something to do properly that serves the city of the arts. The last thing, a proposal I want to suggest, is this next one, the civic identity and integration. Oh, we got the actual PowerPoint working. Fantastic. So this, again, this is just me kind of thinking out of the box and talking with a few other commissioners and even some staff, but I think there's a real question as well as, if we're the city of the arts, are we ensuring that our branding, our logos, all these different aspects of how the public, both within our city and outside our city, engage with us? Are they aligned with that vision of what it means to be the city of the arts? Within the master plan, again, that council approved back in 2021, one of the major things was to elevate the status of the arts, professionalize the city's arts programming and approach and so forth. And so I think this would be another interesting way in which we can engage the Arts Commission and give it some latitude or give it some projects to work on, and perhaps that might look like looking at signage, at placemaking, if there are ever public monuments or, you know, these memory monument placards and these sorts of things, even, you know, if it's as simple as being an advisory body for branding within city staff and helping kind of work and workshop that. I know there were actually funds appropriated and used for a potential rebrand, though I don't think that ever went anywhere. It was just a few thousand dollars that was spent on that. So those are just, you know, some very simple ideas, but I think really just trying to engage the Arts Commission again in what it means for us to be the city of the arts, and how do we actually present that to the public, both within the city and outside of the city? And finally, my last slide, the moment to lead. Here we are. Can I get it? Can we go to the next one? There we are. Fantastic. So as you've been noticing, you know, I'm touching on this idea. What does it mean to be the city of the arts? And I think that we have been a little fuzzy on that for a long while. We, of course, have wonderful institutions that are supported by private donors and, you know, their own nonprofits, which is fantastic, and we, of course, absolutely love, especially in the Arts Commission. But this was a project that was started in the 80s by council, and I think it really raises the question of what they were trying to do then and what we've been trying to do, I guess, in the past four decades since that was passed. But I really would like to ask of the council, you know, what this means to you all. We're actually in this very important moment, at least for the Arts Commission, where we are now ending our previously approved master plan. That was... That's ending this fiscal year '25-'26, and we are in this conversation of what does it look like for us going forward? What's going to happen with that master plan in the first place? But how can the Arts Commission perhaps lead that alongside staff, alongside council, and alongside our community? And I think this allows us for a real opportunity to look beyond just, okay, well, we've done X program, we've done Y program, we've done Z program, and really say, "What does it, again, mean to be the city of the arts?" And we've had numerous public comments, you know, people coming up from Laguna Beach or who are artists that live here but work in Laguna Beach, and they always mention how, you know, when they talk about Costa Mesa, they get laughs from their fellow artists down in Laguna, because, well, sure, it's the city of the arts, but what do they do to recognize that? You know, Laguna started yesterday, the Pageant of the Masters. You obviously have LA just north of us, who has their own kind of creative economy. And what I'm not suggesting is that we go start trying to court major film studios or try to be Laguna 2.0 or whatever it is. But to ask the simple question, what does it mean to us to be the city of the arts? What do we have available to us through our creative economy, through our various brands and companies that are located here, and active transportation and otherwise, and the arts, and the various, you know, entities that are within the city? And how do we actually capitalize on that and create something meaningful? You know, I've interacted throughout my work with various donors who started, for instance, one did this art prize where they gave $250,000 a year to do a major art prize that was selected by the public, and they got over 200,000 people come in this first week. They... All the restaurants in town ran out of food and various things like this. And I think that's the sort of creative ingenuity that we can come up with as the city of the arts. And so I just ask from council, of course, for your input on this, for your partnership on this, but for direction as to, you know, what appetite is there here and what kind of ambition do we have for the city of the arts? Because I think that could really address a lot of things. But with that, I've gone on far too long, so I thank you so much for your time, and would be happy to answer questions here or offline. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for doing this. So councilmember, do you have anything further you want to say?
Stay up there real quick, Fisher. I had one question for you. Did I hear... When I heard you talking about the business impact, I'm thinking about, we're coming up on the 250th birthday of this country next time. Do you see art as generating new revenue streams for the city? I'm not saying we want to be in the... We're the city of the arts, therefore we want to make this be a money-making endeavor, but do you see that as a...
Certainly. Well, I mean, there's the question, obviously, of arts tourism, as it were, and so we have that to some extent with Seegerstrom. We have that to some extent with the Ochman, other various institutions of that sort, where we're getting, you know, outside city residents coming to the city and bringing in revenue that way. But I think there's this bigger question. I mean, as we see right now in Laguna, right, with the Pageant of the Masters, this idea of creative placemaking and how art can contribute to that. And that was part of the idea and the initiative in which we... I led on the Arts Commission, but we approved to recommend to the council with this idea for a mural project or initiative, where we wanted to partner with local businesses and provide some minimal funding to pay for artists to actually put up murals that reflected the city's history and identity. And actually, another resident, Ian Stevenson, had approached me and said, "Hey, I just went to," I don't remember where, Orange, Fortin, Mercedi, told me there's a couple other places that have this, "But they have this whole mural tour where they go and, you know, you go see this mural, and they feed you, and they do all this stuff, and we're Costa Mesa. I mean, we're this foodie town. Don't we have something better to offer?" And so I think there are just many opportunities like that where we can actually build up a unique identity for Costa Mesa and reflect that character within our art and within a way in which it expresses who we are that is attractive to others and brings more people and thus more money, right? And there are many reports on this, and I can share that with you as well, if that's of use.
Hey, thanks a lot. Second bite at the apple. Any other public comments from the people in the chambers? No? Anybody on Zoom? All right. Closed public comment. Councilmembers, do you have anything you want to say? Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, I have some just additional questions and comments. This is a study session, right? So this is sort of sharing some feedback. Okay. Just on the topic raised, I think it may be helpful, because I know this has come up a number of times. The, you know, we're at the end, I think, in the last year of the council-approved Arts and Culture Master Plan, sort of like what's next, what's vision? I think all of the questions raised are great. It's... And I think there's a plan for it, so I'm going to ask Director Gruner just to give us a quick update on like how... My understanding is that you are planning to work with the commission. I think we confirmed that there is budget available to facilitate this sort of visioning exercise of what is the next phase for the Arts and Culture Master Plan. And maybe if you can add into that brief update, what would, you know, how do you engage council in that? And how do we, you know, what is your planned process for bringing those recommendations that I assume would not just be Arts Commission, but also the public? You know, how do you bring that to council, and what's the timing for us to be able to, you know, make budgetary decisions or policy decisions on that?
Yeah, so we do have the, I mean, we do have the budget to go ahead and move forward and develop a future master plan, whatever that looks like. And we would have the preliminary discussion with the commission to exactly see what they envision, what that new master plan looks like, whether that's a three-year or five-year or something completely different. So the goal is to work with the commission and kind of fine-tune then, identify what the overall goal and objective is of this new master plan, so to speak, moving forward. And we would engage the community, obviously, in public outreach and get some input in regards to what the community is looking for out of the Arts Commission and the arts programs in general. I think our program has been very heavily based on, you know, activities and programs and encouraging people to physically get involved, but if that direction is to look at more at, you know, art-specific type of items such as murals, for example, then we would obviously incorporate that into the master plan. So right now is a good time, as we're moving into the new fiscal year and looking forward to next year, once the master plan, the current master plan expires, then we can take this year to fine-tune what our overall goals and objectives are, and we can formulate that into a plan and then bring that to council for next year for the budget.
And the Arts Commission is, like, that will be the place where that plan is shaped, guided, you're taking feedback, prioritizing among recommendations?
Correct.
And then that plan, just as the first one did, would come to council for...
Correct.
...comment again, right?
Yeah.
And then approval. Okay. And timing? Is that a process that's starting now? I know it wants to be done by the end of the year, right?
Yes, exactly. So we have, obviously, the next, you know, 10 to 11 months to kind of, you know, formulate it and finalize it, but the goal is to start the plan relatively soon, at least have that initial dialogue and that discussion, and formulate a strategy moving forward on what that plan looks like. And we would start that, you know, probably in September.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And so I think the, sort of the piece of the presentation we just heard that maybe isn't covered in that, at least from my perspective, is this question about subcommittees. And I'm going back, city attorney, to a couple years ago when we last talked about committees. I think I remember disagreeing in the restrictions on our committees creating subcommittees, but my recollection is that you were adamant that there were Brown Act rules restricting subcommittee formation. So can you, you know, I've seen the subcommittee process work well. I know it's very, very important to balance that with staff time, but you, I recall, I don't recall what it was, but I recall that you made legal arguments, and so can you just update us on that?
Yeah, well, there were both legal and practical arguments, I think, that were part of that conversation, and in terms of practicality, whoops, sorry. There were so many requests that it was really becoming an issue for staff.
Staff time.
Staff time, yeah. Part of the concern that we had legally is that because we had members on more than one committee, that they were in overlapping or potentially conflicting roles, and more to the point, they're talking to three people over here, they're talking to two people over here, and it starts to become problematic. But we definitely felt like with all of these ad hoc committees or subcommittees, if they fully bake the thing and they bring it forward, there's really no public dialogue going on about that thing. And so there was a lot of concern that if all the real work, and I think that was characterized that way, all the real work is being done by the subcommittees, and then they just bring it forward, it gets blessed by the committee, that's... That avoids the whole process of having those meetings publicly. It's fine to do a subcommittee on a specific individual topic that needs a little extra study or whatever, but if you divide all of the work of the committee or commission up into subcommittees, you end up doing all of the work outside of public view. And that's a Brown Act problem.
Okay. So I think discussing the Arts Commission next six months or so, sort of this question of ideas that they have for the future of the Arts and Culture, well, Arts and Culture in general in Costa Mesa, I think I see a pathway forward given that, so I'm just going to describe that and see if that makes sense. I'm looking in our committee handbook because I think we do have a process for ad hoc committees. So trying to see how this can play out in a way that I think works with your concerns laid out and at least the Arts and Culture process going forward. And I want to make sure Director Gruner's nodding too. I'm going to be looking for nodding heads out here to see if this makes sense. So in this example, and I think this will translate to other committees too, in this example, we're, you know, at the start of a planning process, and the commission could in that planning process say, hey, it makes sense over a defined time period to say, to have one or two ad hoc committees focused on these very specific recommendations that we will bring back to the commission. So I think our committee handbook allows for the establishment of, and I couldn't find the language, but time limited, scope limited, approved ad hoc committees that, where there's public discussion about what they're doing, public discussion about when they're going to bring a recommendation back. And so that could be worked in the process through the existing structures.
It could be. In fact, I know, I can remember that at least one ad hoc committee request did come through the process that was approved, and the mayor and I both signed off on it. The limited time, limited scope is the fundamental part of that, because when you have a standing committee, it becomes a Brown Act body, it has to be, you know, public. And to the extent that they're trying to limit the number or limit the public discussion, that sort of defeats the purpose.
Yep.
So there is absolutely that process. And I would have to sort of look at any particular request, any particular subject, to tell you whether I thought it was, you know, maybe appropriate for that process.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor? So if I can just wrap up this, I think that, and I'll look for head nods, like, I think that the interests and goals outlined in the presentation are doable and even part of the plan as part of current planning process that is budgeted and approved by council and the current rules of the committee handbook. Okay. Thank you. No, I wasn't trying to interrupt you. I just, I wanted to add a thought as it related specifically to ad hocs, so we can sort of flesh out that issue before we move on to something else. So it's page 27 of the Commission and Committee Member Handbook. It specifically says, "Ad hoc committees shall only be formed upon approval of the city council liaison and the city attorney." So who functions as a city council liaison for the existing commissions? City Attorney?
Each commission or committee has its own liaison, its own liaison.
Who's the Arts Commission liaison?
I don't know.
The commissions don't have assigned council liaisons. Like, Planning Commission doesn't have one council member who's responsible for Planning Commission.
No, not for Planning Commission has a formal process by which it brings forward to you its recommendations.
But the way this is written right now suggests that without a city council liaison, no commission could form an ad hoc committee, as it's written right now.
The way I would interpret that is if there's no formal liaison, that the mayor would be the person who would approve it.
I'll be the liaison.
So I would, may I finish?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. So I would suggest that we refine this paragraph to make more specific, I would just say at this point, it should probably be the city manager, frankly, if this concern is staff time, and that the city manager has the ability to approve ad hoc committees. I think that there is a good purpose for those committees, limited in time and limited in scope. I would specifically say that those committees should be formed in the interest of research. So I think that's where we've gotten into trouble, is when we're trying to do policymaking, when we're trying to fully flesh out a decision-making process, but to have two or three people go and find out what other cities have done, what best practice might be, and bring that back to the committee or to the commission, I think is the appropriate use for ad hoc committees. So I would like to see this paragraph revised specifically to discuss the sort of the nature of what we prefer ad hoc committees to be formed with the intention of conducting research that is then brought for full vetting by the public. Thank you. I just needed to jump in while we were talking specifically about ad hocs. Thanks.
Is the floor open?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Or is council member Reynolds?
Go ahead, Mike.
I do have others, but I can wait.
Okay. Yeah, actually...
Why don't we drill down on this whole ad hoc thing?
Well, actually, I was, can you do the wind-up before the pitch?
Go ahead.
Because you guys were dancing all around a lot of the issues that I was going to address tonight.
Say whatever you want.
Yeah, first, I just wanted to thank staff for agendizing this and bringing forward this study session. Just kind of, and I appreciate Commissioner DeDarian, you know, coming down here, I like your passion, and you're the exact reason why I've been kind of a proponent of trying to understand our commission process, our committee process, and, you know, how to get our citizenry, our community voice incorporated into our city governance here. And so I wanted to thank staff for agendizing this study session so that helps me understand the process, maybe helps community understand the process, and maybe helps our commissioners and committee members understand the process. I was going to talk a little more about process rather than drill down on some of the specific committee, like the Arts Commission and some of their specific concerns. And I do want, I sense that, you know, there's a healthy tension between staff trying to get all the work done and all the inordinate amount of tasks that are put on their plate. And with probably the most perfect and best knowledge of the granular issues and the information that they need to do their jobs, whether it be budgeting, whether it be parks, whether it be arts. And so, and I've worked in larger organizations where, look, I've got a job to do, I got to get it done, and I don't need guy from five cubicles over coming over to tell me I'm doing it wrong or whatnot. And so there's some of that healthy tension, and that guy in the cubicle several stalls over, in that analogy, is the public in this scenario. We come in and staff is in a position to actually have the most perfect knowledge and probably best equipped to make what are decisions that they deem to be in good faith, the best interest of the city and in their lane. But that isn't to forestall local government, city government, and the fact that we're here to serve our constituents. And constituents need to be heard, and we need to incorporate them best we can into the governing that we do here. And I think a perfect example was Five Pack this year. We had real challenges with the budget this year, and we were tasked with, how do we fill the hole for the 24-25 fiscal year? And do we wave can and effectively defer some projects and fill that hole? And we did that, and we had Five Pack get involved, and with some community input and memos to council that were incorporated into the agenda items, we heard from Five Pack, and I think we modified what was originally presented as deferred CIP items, and it worked. It's not perfect, and there's probably still lots of disagreements amongst there, but at least, in my humble opinion, the public got involved in the process. And then same thing when we moved into 25-26 budgeting. We had even a bigger hole that we had to contemplate filling. And after several Five Pack sessions, working diligently with finance, we crafted a solution and a budget that looked somewhat different than the original recommendations that were presented to us. So a little messy, a little time-consuming, a little cumbersome, maybe a little frustrating from everybody, but that's how I think this is supposed to work a little bit. And so with that said, in my review of the handbook and the materials that were presented as part of the agenda tonight, and actually before doing that, a comment, Councilmember Marr had said, you know, if we're the liaison, it should best be the city manager. I would think not, because you're putting the, I really think it's either a council member liaison, and this is pivoting to ad hoc committees. If it's the attorney and a council liaison, I think it's best equipped not to have the city manager in that process, because it defeats the whole purpose, I think, of having that wall between staff and council versus hearing from the community. And I'm not casting aspersions or anything on a city manager, but they'll be cognizant of the staff's time, maybe too cognizant of the staff's time, and maybe too quick to shut down further inquiries or whatnot. So I think going forward, when we're looking at this ad hoc, formation of ad hoc committees within committees, we should look at, obviously, the city attorney, because she needs to determine if it's an appropriate ad hoc committee. But when it comes to approval, I think it should be either the mayor, or we should designate a city council member to be the liaison on behalf of the city council. So you have two people with eyes on it, so to speak. I do think that under the manual, as Councilmember Marr had stated, I think, paragraph, or page 27 under ad hoc committees, we do have a mechanism in place to get recommendations from our committees. Let me back up before the ad hoc committees. The various committees, and I think page 23 of the manual, yeah, it actually has a timeline that February of each year is when our committees are supposed to present their annual report to council, which are their recommendations of the things that they intend to achieve in the upcoming year. And so it's already provided for in our commission and committee handbook that February of that year, and I think that kind of, maybe those who came before us were a little bit thoughtful in creating some of these policies. If that's, those recommendations are made in February, it does tend to allow the timeframe as we're doing that breakneck speed of budgeting between January and June 30th, each committee has at least presented to council by February of that year their recommendations. And then what I would think, how the mechanism could possibly work, is now you get to the ad hoc committees. How do you actually create those recommendations, those annual reports on recommendations, without violating Brown Acts? You have to, you can't have the entirety of the committees get together to work out and figure out what the recommendations are. It's kind of, I'm a strong proponent of the Brown Act. We want transparency in government, we want to make sure that things aren't done behind closed doors, and the public is involved in every step of the process. The downside to the Brown Act is it really ties the hands of our council members, of committee members, to actually have free, open exchange of ideas and wrap their arms around major issues. And I think that's where the non-quorum ad hoc committees come in and research very defined, very specific issues that, for instance, the Arts Department, I will pivot to that tonight, there may be two, three, four creative ideas that you would like to, that the Arts Commission may want to pursue and make as a recommendation for the upcoming year. So you form an ad hoc committee, three of the members, you get approval from the liaison to the commission, you get approval from the city attorney to make sure you're staying within your lane, and then as part of that February annual report, here's what we're recommending and hope to achieve. So I think the mechanisms are in here to allow that to happen. And the fact that this was put on this agenda tonight caused me to sit down and read through all this stuff and put all the pieces together. So I do think there's some logic behind it, and we can function as a local government that has a healthy tension and good input from the community through our committees and our commissions. I do agree with council members, it appears that the handbook is geared pretty cleanly to committees. Committees can form their ad hoc committees or subcommittees within them. It's less clear as how to address commissions and ad hoc committees with commissions. And I guess I would defer, or I'd ask city attorney, how do we bridge that gap? It seems that this is written pretty clearly that committees can form these ad hoc committees, and I would suggest we use them when coming up with our February annual recommendation report. Do we have a similar mechanism, and can we use ad hoc committees the same way for commissions?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't believe that we have had the same kinds of constraints on the formal commissions, certainly not the Planning Commission. The Parks and Arts Commissions, which at one time was combined and then separated, as far as I recall, we've never received a request for the creation of an ad hoc committee. And I wouldn't presume that those commissions, within the scope of their duties, for example, they are allowed to conduct studies, investigations, et cetera. It doesn't seem to me that you necessarily need to change anything to make clear that those commissions that you have created formally and established through your ordinances are able to, within reason, form ad hoc committees for limited time, limited purpose, as Councilmember Marr pointed out, for the purpose of researching information to bring back to the full commission. I don't want it to be a whole bunch of, you know, let's break up the master plan, we'll have an ad hoc on each topic in the master plan. That little ad hoc will make all the decisions, and then we'll just pile it into one document. That does not allow for the kind of public engagement and input beyond the committee members and commission members. So I think that the opportunity for them to do that exists already. Perhaps that's why we don't have commission liaisons? I don't know. In the past, I know that the committees have all had liaisons, but I don't think any of the commissions ever have, certainly not the Planning Commission. But, you know, not all cities have an arts commission. So I think you have a lot of flexibility. If you think there's a, you'd like to see that formally laid out in the municipal code, we can make a change to the code to provide for that.
I think from a functionality standpoint, probably what I might ask would be that a memo, I mean, every year when we reconstitute our new committees, or every two years or four years, whatever the timeframe is for that, when we reconstitute our new committees or our new commissions, that the chair of each commission, the chair of each committee be given a tutorial guide, a memo, that, okay, you guys are tasked with your annual report come February. In anticipation of being prepared to present that annual recommendation report in February, you either discuss it publicly from the dais, maybe through a study session or whatnot, or if you've identified some specific issues that you think you want to have your commission or your committee accomplish in the next upcoming year, and you need more specific factual information on those things, the chair in consultation with the other members of the committee and/or commission, identify an ad hoc committee and task them with a very specific task, research item, with a very specific timeframe. And I'm just spitballing here, but that's one way to get volunteer community members who are donating their time to be engaged in our local governance, that's how we get them into the process, so.
So I'm going to take the floor for a little while. First of all, I agree with Mike. So, you know, we just went over this in 2013, sorry, 2023, so it's kind of fresh in my mind. The idea of having the council liaison and the city attorney approve the ad hoc committees for committees was because of the issue of not wanting them to go on for a long period of time. of time, wanting them to be subject matter focused. It definitely should be not, in my opinion, agreeing with Mike, it should be the city council liaison, not the city manager. And the reason for that is a couple of things. Number one is the city council liaison is in the meetings. Yes.
Not the commission.
No, I'm not talking about the commissions. I'm talking only about committees now.
They're.
I'm in attendance.
Good for you. Not everyone has.
Well, everybody, okay, first of all, you want to, if you want to talk, you could put your mic on. I'm in attendance. And so at my, my committees are the Five Pack Committee and the Animal Services Committee. And I attend those pretty religiously. I miss some sometimes, and I don't, you know, sometimes I get there late, but I go. So I think they're in a really good position to know what's going on in the committee and to interact with the committee members. Moreover, the committees are not designed to advise staff with, you know, any member of staff up to and including the city manager. They're designed to advise the council. And so I think it's very important to have the council, because here's the thing, and this has happened in my committees, I could think of some examples, but I won't say them, where the committee member said, we'd really like to look into an issue. And I said, I don't think that I care about that, and I don't think the council will care about that. And so I discouraged them from doing that. Now, of course, if they would have pushed it, I would have probably agreed to go along with it, but they didn't. They, we collaborated on that. City managers, sorry, city attorneys there for a fail-safe to comply with the Brown Act. On this issue of, on page 23, I'm getting to commit, I'll get to commissions in a second. On this issue of page 23, where you talk about the annual report requirement, okay, fact of the matter is, we, as I said, we looked at this, I don't know the month, but we looked at it in 2023. We did not have that happen in 2024. We did not have that happen in 2025, where all the committees came and presented a work plan. For whatever reason, it didn't happen. I think in 2026, it's very important for it to happen, and here's why. And I mean, I go back, I was on these committees. I was on the previous incarnation of the Five Pack. The frustration that the committees where I'm the liaison has is feeling that they don't have direction. They don't know what we want. The February meeting is a perfect opportunity for them to say, this is what we've worked on the last year, this is what we're considering working on next year. And then we all say, well, wait a minute, what we'd really like you to do is work on something else or not work on that. Right now, the, the committees, the complaint I hear from committee members is a lack of direction, they don't know what we want. And this February meeting is an opportunity every year to tell the committees what we want, what, what we want from them in the upcoming year, so they can, you know, gear their activities around that, because that's all that matters. Apart from the things that, like the animal services committee, for example, they go to the, the Barktober Fest and they do these different things that they do, and they're all really great, um, uh, community engagement. But in terms of like moving forward, uh, an initiative like, like TNR or like, um, you know, different policies and, and things for registering pets, I mean, they're doing what they think is best, but they don't have the guidance that I think that we could provide them as council. So I do think, I don't want to change anything, I just want to do what's in 23, and I want us to calendar those meetings, and I want the committees to know about that requirement now, does say requirement, and so they can prepare in their upcoming meetings in 2025 for the 2026 reports. And then as for the committee commissions, which I said I'd get to, on the arts, first of all, thank you, Fisher. I kept calling you commissioner, but we're very loose in there. I mean, I, the only quarrel, I, I mean, I had a quarrel when you were like comparing Laguna favorably to Costa Mesa, and I'm like, dude, I mean, you know, we do a lot more art in Costa Mesa, we blow Laguna away, I mean, in terms of that. I mean, I love the pageant of the masters, but it doesn't hold a candle to what happens at the Performing Arts Center. Where we historically have fallen down and where we can really, and I think this is what you were addressing, is putting our public money where our mouth is. So we are blessed by Sagerstrom, OCMA, all these different public and nonprofit groups that have come together and created a great arts culture. There's a great thing on Friday, a big kind of like concert, outdoor concert in the Argiro Center. It's fun, I might go to it, it's my 35th, 30, sorry, 39th wedding anniversary, we might go there. But, but where we've fallen down is like public art. And you're quite right regarding the cannabis tax. I, I know this for a fact, because I was the one that came up with the idea of allocating a portion of the cannabis tax to arts. And what was going on in my head at the time was some type of tangible art, public art. I used the city of Montreal as an example, which I think has some of the best public art in North America, if not the world. And, and my vision was to use some of that tax to try to create more beautiful public art. We do have a lot of murals, but typically the murals have been done by private funding and private artists. So I would like to see that happen. Now, that, you know, and you all have the master plan coming, you know, good luck with that, I've got my ideas, it's not the time and the place for us to discuss that. Again, we don't need to reinvent the wheel in as much as the arts commission, I don't know if this, is this from the municipal code? It says, by its own motion, conduct studies and investigations and hold public hearings as it may deem necessary to formulate policies, plans, procedures relating to arts, to determine the wisdom and efficacy of such policies and so forth and so on. All the power that you need to do what you have suggested that you want to do is embedded in that provision. If you received feedback from anyone at the city that limits that, I think there was a misunderstanding of what the words say. And also, I don't think that the commissions need liaisons by council, they're sworn commissioners. And if they want to choose a ad hoc committee to help implement this, as long as the city attorney is okay with it, I trust the judgment of the commissioners on a majority vote, of course. So that's my feedback.
Thank you, John. I think I'm a little bit between both, both trains of thoughts, and I think it's important to recognize that we're here today because a lot of commissioners and committee members have expressed to us as a whole that they are kind of trying to be proactive in finding a role to play. And I think it's important for us to give space to define roles and tasks for our committee members. I think the talk we're having right now is a little bit interesting conversation for me as a poly sci major from, from college, because we're essentially arguing the merits and lack thereof merits of the city manager former government, which we are going to be tied to forever as being a part of California. That's how California does incorporate its cities. So while these tensions may be annoying and frustrating, and I may share some of the frustrations, we do live in that former government because we're in California, and that's just a fact of the law, of the land. But I do want to mention my comments on the ad hocks, because I do want to give a little bit my perspective. I was part of the cannabis ad hoc committee, and I was not part of the measure K committee. And both times, the members of council who were not in the committees had very vehemently disagreed with the ideas. I took that to be mainly because the committees ended up going into this deep dives on policy and, and researching other cities and reaching conclusions within the group of three that the whole body did not, did not understand, or did not, did not go into as well. And I really am not interested in repeating those lessons that we've learned in my past six years in council. I think if we do ad hocks moving forward, they have to be very time bound and limited, and it has to be for research, not policy. I don't really know why a commission would want to have an ad hoc, but should they want to do an ad hoc, I think is very reasonable to have the chair be the liaison, and maybe they go to the mayor and then city manager and see if it's appropriate. But I do think having one ad hoc at a time per commission and committee is appropriate. We don't want to have a situation where we have multiple ad hocks in one, in one committee or one commission. It's not conducive to moving forward things in this former government we have in California. And then I do want to echo just a point made by, by Mike and John, that I think a yearly review of committees to give, to get an update of what they worked on, and then, and then more direction from council to them on what to focus on the year following, is very appropriate. I think sometimes we want to get updates from committees, and really only Five Pack gives us updates. So I think codifying that would be good for the committees, it'd be good for us to see what they're working on, and it would give a chance to really dictate whether it should be moving forward. Now with that, I want to take a chance to talk a little bit about the night presentation that Fisher did on the arts commission, because you have some thoughts, and I appreciate the work you put in trying to find a, you know, find a role, or in a way, create something that's tangible for you guys to work on. So I'll start first with the funding aspect. While I'm a little hesitant to put more fees on housing, because housing's really a thing, important thing we need, I do like the creativity, and I do think a lot of your decision-making should come from a pot of money that is coming in, either through cannabis and/or other means. I appreciate the idea of creating money from general fund, but I think having a pot for you guys to work with and figure out what you want to use that money for, for the arts, would be very helpful for you guys to have a set direction and ownership of an item. I, I would like to model you guys more off of parks than planning commission, just because you guys come from parks, and planning commission is kind of, I think, deeded by California constitution, and they have different responsibilities. But I think anything that parks has, arts should have as well. When it comes to the identity piece, the only ask I have for specific identity is we make sure we incorporate all facets of community in Costa Mesa, so that includes, you know, making sure we have our pieces that are reflective of our resident residents in Costa Mesa, not just our pieces that are one way or the other. And I do want to get an idea out there that, Costa Mesa has a really shitty, and I'll say it honestly, really shitty entrance sign. So the Mar has a really beautiful one, Esa has a beautiful one, and ours is a little square little plaque on the corner of Harbor and 19th Street. So I think working on a more beautiful entrance to that part of our community would be great. But yeah, those are my general thoughts on the arts commission. I appreciate the, the commission trying to find ways to have a voice, and I think creating some dedicated funding, obviously from cannabis, maybe from other forms, would be good for them. That way they have a pot of money they can work with, and they could decide as a commission how they want to administer that fund and what to focus on. And finally, by the floor, I'll just mention quickly, three more points that I got from reading Ralph's letter to council, thank you, Ralph. I think we should definitely codify some things for committees, so I think I'm open to having all committees have three minutes of public comment, you know, just make it like council meeting, everyone has three minutes. I think creating a, a clear liaison who attends the meetings would be really critical. I know I attend the meetings that I'm the main liaison for, but if I'm an alternate, I don't, I don't always attend, because I'm, I'm an alternate, so I'm assuming that someone else will attend the meeting. So I think having a clear-cut rule that the liaison has to attend the meeting, if they can't attend the meeting, they need to communicate with their alternate, would be really helpful for the committees as we look at this new system where they can ask their liaison for, for ad hocks. And I do also want to track committee attendance, because we should view it the same way we view council meetings, if someone's, if someone's in the community taking up a spot that's meant for committee members, and they're missing multiple meetings, it really isn't fair for members of the public who weren't chosen for that committee, because it is a chance for the public to weigh in on these important facets. So, these are my general thoughts, I might chime in later if more things pop up, but yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any, any other comments? Okay, good stuff. All right, that ends, oh, sorry, Arlis, you have the floor.
Give Councilmember Pettis a chance if he did. Yeah, I'll go back to some of my other, so I, I think what we're taking away is most of what folks are asking for is already in our policy, we just need to follow our policy. And I do want to acknowledge the work of the active transportation committee, which did in the last couple of months actually bring a report. They've, they've religiously brought an annual report to the council. I do think it's really valuable to think about how we schedule those, though. I like the idea of like, a meeting that is all of the reports that sort of feeds into our annual budget cycle process, and where that report is less, well, includes, you know, what the committee's done, but really focused on like, what are the recommendations and asks for the next year for that clear, clear guidance. So I think following our existing policy, which has timing that feeds into the budget cycle, if, if we want to adjust that timing, I, I think that's, that's appropriate. But I, I do think we have that mechanism in place. Yeah, I'm going to ask the city attorney, I think one thing that's missing from the committee handbook that would be helpful, and I learned the hard way, I learned this the hard way my first year on council, but I do think we need clarity for both the council liaison and committee members about the role and, and limitations of the council liaison in terms of their committee participation. Maybe I'll just pause there and, and ask the city attorney to, to explain that, then we can clarify anything, but I, I think that needs to be clearly in the committee handbook as well. Because sometimes I, you know, I think people are looking to me for input as a council liaison, and I specifically say I'm not like, I'm not engaging in this conversation.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, typically what we have recommended is that the council liaison be there to listen, so that they can report back to the full council on what's going on with that committee or commission. In the, in, what I was seeing happening some time ago was that the council liaison was basically acting like a de facto member of the committee, and that isn't really appropriate. It puts that one council member in the, in the dialogue at one level, and then gives them a, a different role in a dialogue at the council level. So it really is best for the liaisons to the committees to really just listen. And certainly, they can answer questions, they can ask questions, but it, it really is designed to have a mechanism for that committee, a link for that committee to send a message back to the council through the liaison in, in the regular course of business, not just in their annual report. So that's what I recommend.
Thanks. And then the, the other thing that I think would be valuable to put in the committee handbook and, and possibly talk through in terms of process is this question of, you know, when there's a feeling of, of imbalance in staff resources. So I know it's come up, whether it's through, you know, previous subcommittees that, you know, were, did have staff time involved, or just sort of the questions and requests for staff. I do think we need a process, because we do have, you know, an aggressive council agenda. We have stuff that we've all agreed to and voted on to move forward. If, if a, the staff liaison or the director or the city manager does reach a point where requests from commissioners or committee members is starting to impact their ability to do day-to-day work or advance the already agreed upon goals or activities by the city council, there does need to be a mechanism to address that, and I'm not sure that that's clear. So if there is one, it'd be great to hear, otherwise, maybe that's something that we can work through and clarify. So there's, there's understanding of when there is a little. So there's understanding of when there is a little bit of a pushback to say, you know, "not right now," or "I need to bring that to council before we can give direction." So I don't know if anyone has a comment on that, but I think that's one of the challenges we haven't really addressed here tonight yet.
Yeah, I think it would be probably good when we do our next commission and committee training to really talk through that a little bit more. I do think that part of the reason in 2023, when the changes were made, was in part because I think staff felt like it was having some really specific individualized demands that were getting in the way of pursuing council priorities. And that they felt frustrated because they're in the moment at that committee meeting, they're being asked to provide information, staff time, whatever, and they feel like they're having to put the council priorities on the shelf. It's a natural tension, right, whenever you've got advisory committees, and I think that's part of the reason that the rules were made as they were. I would suggest that we spend some time talking about that issue and reminding the committee and commission members that, you know, staff is fully assigned and that they do have some time constraints. We have a four-hour rule for the council. I think we should, at a minimum, follow that for committee and commission members as well.
Yeah, okay. I think there's some other, just sort of general cleanup, a few things that are, you know, again, in the committee handbook, but other than that, I think, you know, one of the biggest takeaways is, again, if we're following our policy, I think some of the challenges are addressed. As the mayor said, if there's this annual review by council of the work plan, there's clear direction. I think that may actually solve a lot of the challenges, so I would advocate for not making any other substantive changes until we see how that works over the next year. Thanks.
Just to put a quick bow on it, Mayor. So, I mean, I think this is a good exercise. To clarify, it sounds like there's a lot of things that are already in the handbook and in municipal code that empower our folks to do what they want to do. And I also think that the people in this room that needed to hear what they are empowered to do have heard what they're empowered to do. So I think there was some confusion, maybe, and there were some... I don't want to... Nobody was... There was nothing... There was no blocking going on, but I think maybe it was just... Now that we're all on the same page, we're all on the same page, right? So they can do what the municipal code says they're empowered to do, and if there is issues going forward, we'll hear about it in real time, right? Okay. All right, cool. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
May I clarify?
Yes.
Some information the council has provided. So we do have the language in the committee handbook that specifies how the committees report out to the city council, and I want to recognize the Active Transportation Committee. They are the one committee that has consistently, every year, made a presentation to the city council on their accomplishments, their goals for the next fiscal year, and provided some budget suggestions. What we don't have clarity on is the commissions that are not in the handbook, the commissions that are codified. The planning commission's recommendations to the council are clear in the municipal code. How the Arts Commission and the Parks and Community Services Commission report back to the city council is not. So we did recommend some language in the staff report that's similar to what the Finance and Pension Advisory Committee has in their section of the handbook, and it states, "A memorandum from the chair will be provided to the city council as to their recommendations. A majority of the commission must agree on the recommendation." So I don't think we need to codify that language. We could probably just add it to the committee handbook, but I think that is a good way for the two commissions, Parks and Community Services and Arts, to provide recommendations to the council that are outside the scope of an annual report but are on things that are sort of singular policy or program issues that come up that they want to bring to the council's attention.
I think that language is perfect. I just also want to say for the record, I read Ralph, I read your email, and I thought all your points were good. So, and I like that language. I think it makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, I think I agree with everything that's been shared so far, and since we're sharing our resumes. I was a member of the BikeWay and Walkability Committee before it was renamed, was a member of the Cultural Arts Committee for several terms, and then became the commission liaison for the Cultural Arts Committee as liaison to Five Pack, and then the liaison to Historical Preservation. And so I've spent a lot of time in committees. I've got a couple of reservations with this idea that the council liaison, having been one, is sort of the ultimate decider. For one, right now, of our eight committees, only three council members are council liaisons for those eight committees. And, you know, certainly in the case of Five Pack, where I think some of the recommendations were being made, I agree with some, I don't agree with others, and I'm not sure that I want a single council member out of the seven of us to be sort of the ultimate decider of the work plans of each committee. So I want to be really careful with that, which is why I made the suggestion that it should be the city manager, or it should be a neutral party, for lack of a better word, because I'm not completely confident that appointing a single council member truly represents my interests on all of those committees. So I would like to, you know, pass that back to the city manager to provide some alternatives or some recommendations for how we might consider that process. I think the, you know, the other thing is, I just want to double down on the importance of those annual reports, that is so helpful for us as council members, but we also are restrained by that. So I meet with my appointee to the Fairview Park Steering Committee, for example, because I know I am not an expert on Fairview Park, and he is in every single one of those meetings. I think members of each of the commissions that we've talked about have reached out to me at different times to share feedback on what's working and what's not working. My job as a council member is to listen to those people, and so I don't know that we need to codify all of these things. My preference is that we shift some of the expectations, maybe through training, maybe through the conversations we're having, that suggests that there is an open door both ways, that is the point of appointing people, that is the point of, like, being part of this community and being elected in this position, is that my job is to listen to what's happening on those committees. And whether I'm watching planning commission's meetings, you know, by myself at nine o'clock at night on a Monday night for fun, or whether I'm taking a coffee with my Fairview Park Steering Committee meeting, we do not need to codify every single one of these things. We should be having conversations and engaging in the role that is a council member in order to make sure that the voices of the community are being listened to. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to correct just something I just heard. My comments regarding the liaison were directed toward developing and approving an ad hoc committee that had already been requested by a majority of the committee. The work plan is not something that would be done by the liaison. That would be done, and according to page 23 of the handbook, that should be done by the council in conjunction with the committee at the time they provide their report. Okay? If there's nothing else, why don't we end this item? Okay? Move on to the next item?
I'm sorry. There may be one thing that I am not sure we got follow-up on.
Of course.
So this, the commission, so formation, this goes to Councilmember Mar's first question around 5:30 tonight. So that, right now, the committee handbook has instructions on ad hoc committee formation for committees, and it references the council liaison and city attorney. So for commissions to do an ad hoc, what is the approval process? I agree with the recommendation that it's city manager and city attorney, and I think that's more of a really formality to make sure that there's, you know, the legal issues and then staff time consistent with policies. I'd rather not create a new council liaison position to our commissions as well.
No. My point was, you don't need city manager or a council liaison.
So just the city attorney.
Just the city attorney. I mean, because I think I draw a distinction between the commissions and the committees, because there's sworn commission members who are paid and everything like that. I don't think that they need either the city manager or a council liaison to oversee their decision to do an ad hoc committee. They should be Brown Act compliant, and that's why it's good that they have an attorney to help them. Okay?
I think... I'm sorry. Can I just weigh in really quickly? I think that's fine. I do want to be cognizant of staff's time. And also urge the more formal commissions to be respectful of staff time and remind them of our four-hour rule, that if they're more than happy, if they want to go and do some research on their own and bring it back and work with staff, that's fine, but if staff is going to be doing all the running around, they should at least consult with or hear from city management about staff's time availability in connection with that particular issue.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I think the only additional, I hate to call it a scream, maybe a check, and maybe this is part of the rules on creating an ad hoc committee, is confirmation that it's consistent with council's goals. I see that as sort of the role of the council liaison, is let's make sure this is consistent with our goals that we've set, and so just making sure that that happens. Maybe that's a language adjustment. Okay, thank you.
Cool. Any more parting shots before we go on to the item? Okay. City clerk, if you could please read the title to the next item?
The next item is discussion of a Code of Ethics and Conduct, and I'll do the presentation on that. For your consideration is a Code of Ethics and Conduct, as the city currently does not have a policy. Staff has provided a draft policy as a starting point for your discussion. Also provided is the City of Irvine's policy, as suggested by Councilmember Mar as a reference, and the City of Gardena, that was provided by the city attorney. Additionally, today, Councilmember Reynolds has provided the Newport-Mason Unified School District policy. It has been provided in your additional documents and has been provided to the public. These are various key components for your consideration. You can use all, none, or just a few of them. They're points that we have pulled from various different cities' policies. And staff recommends the city council discuss a Code of Ethics and Conduct policy and provide feedback and direction for staff development of a policy that we will bring back to you.
Thank you, city clerk. Now, council, oh, you have time for questions? If any questions, please upon your mic now.
We're doing public comment first, or we jumping into questions?
Council questions first, followed by public comment.
Okay. Councilmember Mar, you want to go first? Or you want me to jump in?
I'm happy to jump in. I don't think that the version that staff prepared includes anything about incompatible employment, is that right? I was looking for it. There's a section on representation of private interests, but...
What did you say, incompatible?
Incompatible employment. So the City of Irvine one, which I think is one of the ones I had originally shared when I made the request to agendize this, contains a clause essentially suggesting that we not use the fact that we're elected to benefit ourselves financially by hawking our services or wares in other cities as an expert on municipal matters. And so I think it's important to extend that. The City of Irvine one includes the County of Orange. I would like to extend that to the County of Los Angeles, such that we're not using our positional authority, as it were, on the council to financially benefit ourselves. Secondly, I also like to add a one-year cooling-off period to extend that term of incompatible employment to one year after you are no longer on council. So the day after you leave council, you are not immediately lobbying in a position that you were just in. And then third, I think the City of Gardena example included some important language on retaliation, particularly against city staff. So the idea being, if a staff member does not do as I say or permit a business I am a friend of, that I am not partaking in any form of retaliation. Those are the three additions I would like made to the draft you've prepared. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I have a few questions. First, tonight, this is just a study session. We haven't, in order to adopt these, we would bring, first, hammer out the makings of a potential Code of Ethics, and then secondly, we come before the council, we vote on whether or not we're going to adopt. Am I correct on that?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So when we get to that aspect of it, the $64 question, do we need a Code of Ethics? And I'm not going to belabor that tonight. I do understand the concept behind it. We want to have transparency, we want our community to have trust and faith, that, you know, who's watching the watchers? I do know as a newly elected, I sat through the required various seminars to educate it on Brown Act and finance requirements, and it's a requirement of sitting in this chair to certify that I sat through that education and whatnot, and I knew, I know the already pre-existing laws that are out there that effectively track what I'm seeing in this Code of Ethics. So by us engaging in this study session tonight, I'm going to reserve any judgment as to whether or not I'm on board that we adopt these. But with that precursor, I looked at the one that was proposed, and I looked at the other exemplars that were submitted, and it occurs to me that this entire Code of Ethics and Conduct, it's not only applicable to the electeds and the appointees who are acting as the face of the city, or acting as representatives of our constituents, but I noticed in the draft that we're here to discuss, to me, it seemed like a glaring omission that none of the employees and prominent employees that act as the face of the city are included. And I did look at the Irvine one that was submitted, and we look at their paragraph B as using the division, and this is their Code of Ethics, and this was attachment two, "City officials and employees," quote, "shall mean and include the following individuals: the mayor, the vice mayor, the interim mayor, members of the city council, city council executive assistants, the city manager, assistant city managers, the city clerk, department directors, da-da-da-da." Before I got to attachment two, and I was just reading through this, it did strike me, as I was reading the draft exemplar attachment one, as I was reading it, just thinking to myself, why, this applies to, we're talking about face of the city. We want those people who are employed by the city, either by the ballot box or being paid for by our taxes, to conduct themselves in such a way that it reflects well on the city. And it struck me that this should be equally applicable to anybody who is out there in the public domain acting on behalf of the city. So if we move forward, I would want to more closely track the City of Irvine and make sure that this Code of Ethics applies to everybody, not just the elected and the appointed, but the more prominent employees who conduct themselves and conduct business on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Does anybody...
I'm not...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mike. I thought you were done.
And here's the attorney and me coming out a little bit. There's pros and cons when you have vague language in a contract or whatever. One, it's to give people wiggle room. On the other hand, it makes it tough to enforce, and it can create billable opportunities for attorneys. And when I look at paragraph 14, and it's talking, and I'm going to paraphrase, "being certain that council recognizes their role," and I'm just paraphrasing and using a poor term of art here, "but we stay in our lane and don't interfere and get too involved with staff or whatnot." And in particular, we look at this last paragraph, "except as provided by the city ordinance..." And in particular, we look at this last paragraph, "except as provided by the city ordinance members," and I think that's referring to our council members and appointees, "shall not interfere with the administrative functions of the cities, of the professional duties of city staff, nor shall they impair the ability of staff to implement council policy." There's a fine line between impair and interfere and having disagreements with how you guys are interpreting the implementation of, of policy. So if we continue down this path and we're, we're going to present to council a code of ethics to adopt, I'm going to want to figure out, wordsmith that paragraph 14 quite a bit to make sure that it's more enforceable and not subject to just vague interpretation that, that could create problems for everybody.
Okay.
One last thing.
Sorry, yeah.
Last thing, and this is really just a stream of consciousness, Beulah, here. When we get to paragraph 16, "I appreciate the sentiment behind a positive workplace environment, but members shall refrain from publicly criticizing any employees and refrain from creating the perception of inappropriate direction." Hopefully, those instances or those occurrence would be few and far between, but, but it seems borderline stepping on toes of First Amendment speech if, if there are healthy, honest disagreements. I would like to think that we refrain from making it personal or whatnot, but there may be instances where, again, one person's criticism is another person's policy violation. So again, I'm just issue spotting a little bit. If we continue forward down this path, I'm just going to want to think a little more about this paragraph 16 and how we actually word it. So those were my thoughts.
Any other council comments? Arliss, do you have something?
City Attorney, did you have a, I think you were going to say something related to staff conduct?
Oh, yeah, I did want to point out, I, I agree with you, Councilmember Beulah, that senior staff, department heads, et cetera, should and, and would normally be included in such a, a policy. They are covered by the ethics training requirements under state law. They are covered by a number of FPPC rules and government code sections that preclude certain kinds of incompatible employment, coming back to your agency as an advocate in, in a year after, et cetera. So I would certainly, if we were going to adopt a code of conduct, I would ensure that it definitely applied to the senior staff.
Excuse me, Arliss, did you want the floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to pick out the most important comments that I'll just go through here. So I do, I do think that, and thank you, staff, for, for putting this together and bringing some other examples. It was really helpful to read through. Just a note to council, I did just like an hour or two before the meeting, get the, and I'm glad we have a copy in front of us, the trustees' protocols. This is something that one of the trustees recommended reviewing. I'll admit, I hadn't looked through it, but I, I'm, I'm looking forward to looking through it. One thing I thought was interesting is that I, I believe they go through an annual process to kind of review as a body and reaffirm these protocols, either annual or biannual, which I, I thought was a good idea. One of the reasons I, I think it's a really good idea to have this, in addition to agreeing with a lot of the, the content, both in the draft and other examples, is just like with the committee handbook in our last session, there was discussion that like, oh, hey, me actually reading the committee handbook reminded me of some of the rules. So I think the same, being a council member is a pretty unique role. It's a uniquely powerful role. It's, it's different, I think, than what you think when you're running for office. And so the annual process of reviewing the protocols, the limitations, you know, a lot of these, and there's acknowledgement in the drafts, are self-enforcing, right? It's not, it's not that you can't criticize, it's that, you know, we're agreeing as a council that we're going to be, you know, professional in our conduct. Of course, you know, we're not taking away everyone's First Amendment's rights. We're just saying, as a council, we want to have a certain standard of conduct that we're all going to agree on an annual basis to adhere to. So I, I do think it's an important and valuable document for ourselves, for our commissioners, for committee members, and for staff, and to remind ourselves of these things on an annual basis, both for general conduct, which, you know, hopefully, we all carry in our professional lives, but also for the, the unique aspects of being a council member while we have full-time jobs in a council manager form of government. So I'm, I'm glad we're, we're reviewing this. I, I hope we adopt one. I know members of the community have been asking for, for one for a while, and I'm, I'm glad we're here. Some of the things that I, I liked, and in the examples that I would hope we include are the incompatible employment sections, the future employment items, use of city resources. I think we've had a discussion earlier today, also in terms of use of staff time outside of the direction of council. I know we have a policy on that. I think maybe there's some ways we can, can clarify what that rule is, also for, for the community members to be aware of. I know, I'm sure we all get, get comments. I get a lot of questions from the communities, why can't you do this? Why can't you do that? And I have to remind people of the limitations of my, my own authority as, as a single council member. The no nepotism rule, I think, is an important one. Whistleblower protection, a really important one. Oh, on the no nepotism, I think one of my notes here, you know, we say, you know, if you do, well, I would, I would encourage adding to the language disclosure if you do have any relationships, just disclosing that to the city attorney as a valuable transparency exercise and maybe even protection exercise. I, I liked, formatting-wise, I liked the City of Gardena. I thought it was a really clear, easy read. I think the language in it is, is just sort of easier to, to understand in the way it's organized. I really liked the introduction, you know, starting with a statement of the council manager form of government. I think the, the policy role of elected and appointed officials kind of reinforcing and clarifying that. It's, you know, I think it's confusing because a lot of people, you know, local government, again, is a unique beast. We see in the news usually information about like large cities, which is, you know, where council members are full-time. It is a different form of government. Every city council operates a little bit differently. And so I think having this information sort of clearly outlined as a reminder, both for ourselves as a body, but also for our constituents, is really valuable. So the policy role of elected and appointed officials, again, I thought was really important. What, what I didn't see in here is, again, sort of clarity when there are situations that kind of maybe push up against the existing policies. So when there are requests that go outside of this, you know, council policy on the four-hour rule, when there are requests that a staff member may think is, you know, outside the, the bounds, or when there is a request that may be inconsistent with city council direction, it's not clear what the, what the next steps are on that. And I think that would be helpful to outline. I know I'm, I'm, I'm looking for Director Seth Rama out there. I'm sure I've made, I know I've made some requests of him that were more than four hours, and he's, he's pushed back, and I've had to sort of work through that with the, the city manager. And, and so having that sort of written as an educational reference piece, I think, would be, would be helpful. I didn't see anywhere, but I think it's important to outline, you know, confirm that, again, we are representatives of the city, we are in powerful positions for the city, but we are not individual decision-makers. And so refraining from committing city resources without city manager or council approval, I think needs to be clarified and can, can help in a lot of conversations with constituents. Oh, and we've already talked about this, but last item. So yeah, just clarifying the role of council liaison in our committee handbook. So in terms of our engagement with the, you know, commissions and committees, I think would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's open it up to the public before we hear more comments from council. Anybody from the public wish to be heard? All right. Fisher, two minutes this time.
Absolutely. I was going to say just as much. You only have two minutes for me, and I'll be sure to stick to it. The two comments that I were going to make have already been mentioned by Councilmember Beulah, but I just think it worth, worth saying nonetheless, as I will have to sign this as well, and of course, I think the final section says something about the sanctionable actions being censured or removal from both leadership or from your post. And so, so the two that really stuck out to me when reading, I think obviously, you know, we all agree, we should be upholding the law, we should be acting with the highest standards of ethics and virtue within our positions, and we should not be seeking material benefit for our own personal interests. But, but one that stuck out to me was section 16 about the positive workplace environment. As much as I think it corrects that we not abuse, harass, or otherwise cause harm in any way to staff members or anything of that sort, we all have experience in various settings, whether at work or otherwise, in which pursuing a line of questioning is in the public interest or in the best interest of the entity or organization, or whatever it might be. And sometimes those conversations get uncomfortable, and dissent is difficult, and it's not, as Councilmember Beulah said, too positive. And, and I fear that that would be an overstep in, in a way in which we can quiet, I guess, disagreement in some sense. And it's important that we, as public officials, act in the best interest of, of the public and act for the common good, which will oftentimes, or sometimes at the very least, require that of us. The other point I wanted to raise was in section 14, again, what Councilmember Beulah said, the policy role of members and this question of interference. Now, I know I'm a lowly commission member, and I don't know exactly if I, you know, would qualify in these settings, but as I raised this question of subcommittees and trying to figure out how exactly that works, given the ordinance versus procedures, you know, would that be interference? And, and ultimately, you know, again, this gets back to the question of sanctions. What exactly is interference? And I think that becomes difficult in defining when, when there are actual consequences. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody, anybody else from the chambers wish to be heard? Okay. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Closed public comment. Let's go back to the council comments. Manuel, you had something you wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Yeah, I think, and look, I'm, I'm mainly listening today. I wanted to kind of get people's feedbacks and curiosity. I, I have, I will share my experiences. I've had the role working in the County of Orange while we got, we got city council. And my only recommendation is that we don't pass a policy that would limit folks from, from working other agencies. I know Irvine, when they passed their policy, one of their members of the committee had to resign. So I think being mindful that this is going to be applying to committee members and commissioners, must be very careful, methodical to not pass a policy that's too broad and creates folks to lose their job or livelihood, because it's not really fair, in my opinion, to do that retroactively. Looking at the bullet points of things that are popping up, there's three that I think we really should be looking at. I think conflict of interest is one, gifts and favors, two, confidential information is three. I think those three for sure have to be part of a policy, but I think keeping it targeted and focused is really good. I don't know if I entirely agree with Mike and with Fisher's comments right now, but I do believe there's a point for, for disagreements on the dais, and that's normal and, and usual. And I think sometimes those happen with, with staff as well, behind closed doors, usually for councils, with city manager or directors. So I think leaving room for tough conversations is important, because sometimes I am going to push back at, at city manager when they suddenly tell me no, because my job as a council member is to advocate for my district, and sometimes being told no on something that I know my district needs is not going to fly with me. So that being said, I do want us to have a policy. I don't know if it is to be fully, fully expansive as we have now, but I do think the three biggest things that we should be focusing on are conflict of interest, gifts and favors, and confidential information. And I'm just mindful that because we're going to be applying this to other people, such as commissioners and committee members, we'd be very careful when we implement it that no one has to, has to lose their job or has to resign from a committee or commission because there's a conflict that they didn't know of before. And finally, I do want to say, I think employees, at least the top brass employees, like directors, any public speaking employee, should be subject to the same, the same policy.
Andrea?
I just want to clarify, are you suggesting that the language from the City of Irvine regarding, regarding how you, your potential for incompatible employment is what you're taking objection to?
I think because we're going to be applying this to folks who are already in positions on committees and commissions, that there should be at least some leeway period for folks that have maybe jobs that may conflict.
Okay. So I would ask the city attorney, I think there's a distinction there, whether you are using your position on city council to financially benefit by presenting yourself as an expert in all things municipal, is, in my mind, different than being a staffer in the City of Orange. So can you?
I, I think that's right. For example, their restriction specifically says it's not applicable to lobbying as an in-house employee on behalf of an employer. So I would say that anybody that was working here is, when they are acting on behalf of the City of Costa Mesa, would fall within that exemption. On the other hand, if they are lobbying in front of some other agency and holding themselves out as an expert because they are an employee of the City of Costa Mesa, that's a different situation. I hope that I made that distinction.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give an example. So in my work, we do planning for clean energy. So if I were to write a proposal to the Clean Power Authority, which is the CCA for Los Angeles, and say, you should hire me because I'm a city council member in Costa Mesa, I would find that to be inappropriate and an abuse of my privilege in this position. Would you agree?
I would.
Okay. That is what I would like codified in our code of ethics.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right, good. I'm sorry, Arliss, go ahead.
Yeah, one other, so additional language that I would like to consider, and this goes back to, you know, I appreciate the, the comments made about, you know, we're going to disagree, and absolutely, I think we're, we come up with some of the best decisions when we actually disagree and then work out a solution. There is a, I think, value in including in, in, in our code of conduct, right, which is not really enforceable, other than like, this is how we agree that we're going to conduct ourselves, is some language about respectful communication. Again, thinking about the difference when you're, you know, running for office and thinking about what you're going to do as a council member, I think we've all gone through, and we've even talked about going through this sort of recognition period of like, oh, okay, maybe I misunderstood that, right? As a council member, you have access to a lot more information. And so I think it's, it's really important to be thoughtful when we are in this role, you know, wearing the jacket, wearing the hat, representing the city, to make sure that you are providing accurate, well-founded information, accurate information about the decisions and discussions of the city. You know, disagreeing, fine, but respecting the opinions of fellow council members, and really working to refrain from ad hominem attacks and personal criticisms or so in your public communications. So I would, I would like to consider including that in a code of conduct as well.
All right. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned. Thanks.